Good morning. Welcome to the Quarterly Awards and Recognition Ceremony. It's welcome. This is an opportunity for us to celebrate the awesomeness of Hillsborough County employees and staff and workers. We're going to have an invocation and a pledge given by our chaplain, Commissioner State AC White. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask that everyone please stand at this time for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Heavenly Father, I would like to give thanks for the great people and causes that will be recognized here this morning, and I ask that you provide your blessings to these people and causes. As always, I pray for our first responders and members of our armed forces, that you will keep them safe and guide them each and every day, and I continue to pray for peace, especially in Ukraine. I give these thanks and ask for these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, everyone, for being here, and I just want to thank everyone for the work that they're doing today. And with that, we are going to move remotely for the celebration of those that have served our county so well and our residents so well. Commissioner Myers is going to be offering our first recognition, and she is at our Public Safety Operations Complex. And Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Good morning, Madam Chair. It's an honor to present three proclamations declaring June 26, 2022 as Amateur Radio Week, June 9, 2022 as Community Emergency Response Team Day, and May 1 through May 7, 2022 as Hurricane Preparedness Week. Also, I am honored that we have with us from the City of Tampa Chief Barbara Tripp. You can wave. Okay, thank you. It is my pleasure to present these three recognitions with honor our emergency response teams. These brave individuals have done so much in safeguarding the health and welfare of our residents and visitors. I would like to invite the following people to join me here at the podium. Bill Miller, Emergency Coordinator for Amateur Radio; Christopher Smith, Training and Exercise Coordinator for Hillsborough County's Office of Emergency Management; Bob Preston from the Sun City Community Emergency Response Team; Elizabeth A. Dunn from the University of Florida College of Public Health; Pastor Dr. Raul Vasquez, President and Founder of Disaster Response Ministry International; Raleigh Turf, Lead Emergency Planner for the Tampa Fire and Rescue; and Director Tim Dudley from Hillsborough County Office of Emergency Management. Thank you for being here. This is the first proclamation to celebrate the hard work and commitment of local amateur radio operators. These highly skilled individuals have dedicated countless hours of free radio communications during state of emergency, in addition to providing other vital news that impacts our community. For their service to Hillsborough County, I will read this proclamation, which honors all amateur radio operators. The proclamation reads, whereas amateur radio operators are celebrating nearly a century since the first human voice broadcast over the airways and radio continued to provide a bridge between people, society, and country, and whereas amateur radio operators have provided countless hours of volunteer community service during emergencies, lending their talents free of charge to local organizations for decades, and whereas amateur radio operators offer invaluable assistance by providing free radio communications for local parades, bike-a-thons, walk-a-thons, fairs, and other events. And whereas the American Radio Relay League, also known as ARA, is a national association for amateur radio operators, and the Amateur Radio Field Day exercise will take place from June 25 to June 26, 2022, and whereas the ARA Amateur Radio Field Day exercise is a 24-hour emergency preparedness program that demonstrates the radio amateur skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communication to the community, and whereas Hillsborough County celebrates the diligence of operators known as HAMs, who also serve as weather spotters in the Skywarn Program of the National Weather Service, and whereas Hillsborough County recognizes the service amateur radio operators provide to emergency response organization, including Hillsborough County Fire Office of Emergency Management, the City of Plant City, the City of Tampa, and the City of Tempe Terrace. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare June 20 to June 26, 2022 as Amateur Radio Week in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents to show appreciation for the dedication, I'm sorry, spirit of service and expertise of all amateur radio operators in the community. Executed this fifth day of May, 2022, signed by all seven county commissioners. Congratulations. Mr. Miller?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you like to share a few words with us?
I'm accepting this award on behalf of all the amateur radios in the county. This kind of work is a team event. It's not three or four people, and we'll continue to do the best we can to support the county.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate your words. You're going to do the best you can, and as long as you're taking care of Hillsborough County, that's all that matters.
Yes, ma'am.
All righty. The next proclamation honors CERT. Members, now I am sure there are some of you who are asking, what is CERT? CERT stands for Community Emergency Response Team. Over the last couple of years, the Hillsborough County's Emergency Operations Center was activated in response to COVID-19 and several tropical storms. Our local CERT members played an integral part in aiding our community during these challenging times, and this proclamation serves as a symbol of our thanks for their hard work. The proclamation reads, whereas originated in 1985, Community Emergency Response Team, also known as CERT, are composed of training civilians, volunteers, who assist local first responders during disaster, and whereas Community Emergency Response Team further demonstrate the vital role by serving during state of local emergency, playing a vital role in COVID-19 relief, in addition to county exercises and charitable events, and whereas CERT members serve in all 50 states, including many tribal nations and the U.S. territory, and each is unique to their community and extensive to building a culture of preparedness. And whereas the experienced CERT members are on call as needed for 24 hours, emergency preparedness, demonstrating emergency skills and readiness to provide self-supporting community response, and whereas Hillsborough County recognizes the service of CERT volunteers to the Hillsborough County Fire Rescue Office of Emergency Management, the City of Plant City, the City of Tampa, and the City of Tempe Terrace, and whereas Hillsborough County celebrates the commitment CERT members who tirelessly dedicate countless hours to all communities within the Tampa Bay region, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare June 9, 2022 as Community Emergency Response Team Day in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents to recognize and thank the members of the Community Emergency Response Team for their unwavering dedication to the communities they serve. Executed this fifth day of May, 2022, signed by all seven commissioners. Thank you all for what you do. Mr. Smith? Come on up. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Commissioner Myers, Board of County Commissioners, and our leadership. I wanted to take a moment and thank our community, county, emergency response teams for all their outstanding work, their dedication, and their job well done, and for always answering the call. Your long hours are not unnoticed, and a recognition is long overdue. So thank you for all your hard work, and I look forward to continuing our partnership well into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate you want to continue the partnership into the future, and that's what we would need because we're getting ready for all kinds of seasons like the hurricane is probably the next thing coming. The last proclamation highlights an important motto that all residents should remember during hurricane seasons: Prepare, Plan, and Stay Informed. Let me repeat that. Prepare, plan, and stay informed. To prepare means to have a ready kit of emergency supplies. To plan is to have a communications plan available that identifies key contact information for everyone, as well as a safe location for relevant emergencies. Equally important is to stay informed by getting a weather radio, signing up for HCFL, that is Hillsborough County, Florida, alerts through the county's website, and by staying connected to local media outlets. This three-step program is extensive for preparing for hurricane season. I'm proud to present this proclamation to Mr. Tim Dudley, declaring May 1 through May 7, 2022 as Hurricane Preparedness Week. The proclamation reads, whereas the tropical climate continues to attract people from all over the world to Florida to live, work, and visit, and whereas in recent years Hillsborough County has had several severe weather events, including tropical storms, that require activation of the Emergency Operations Center, and whereas residents are urged to prepare for the unexpected and make every effort to protect themselves, their loved ones, pets, and property, and whereas Hillsborough County is committed to preserving the safety, security, and livelihood of all residents and visitors during any disaster, and encourages families to make informed and responsible preparation in the event that a hurricane threatens our area. And whereas Hurricane Preparedness Week is a countywide effort to inform local communities about the danger of hurricane season and what actions residents and visitors should take to stay safe, and whereas Hurricane Preparedness Week is marked by a variety of local educational events and outreach activities focused on the importance of taking action, including a variety of hurricane preparedness events and targeted outreach to residents in evacuation zones and mobile homes countywide. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare May 1 through May 7, 2022 as Hurricane Preparedness Week in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents to take action early and ready for any storm that might threaten the area. Executed this fifth day of May, 2022, signed by all seven county commissioners. Congratulations. Mr. Dudley, all your teams have done wonderfully these past two years. Would you like to share some thoughts about them?
Thank you, Commissioner Myers, Board of County Commissioners, Chief Jones, Chief Tripp, John in Tampa, and all attendees this morning. Commissioner Myers, you touched on the highlights and hot points of where we actually need to be for the 2022 season coming up in less than 30 days. The Office of Emergency Management teams are diligently spread throughout the county carrying the message of readiness. As you've seen here, recognize today, we can't do this by ourselves. It's a partnership with the amateur radio teams and our CERT teams, working together to ensure that we are ready and resilient as a community. I just wanted to thank Mr. Miller, Professor Elizabeth Dunn, Pastor Raul, Bob Preston, Raleigh Tough, and all the folks here that support the Emergency Operations Center and all the hard work that has been put in to ensure that we are ready to respond when the call comes. So again, thank you, and now's the time to get ready.
Before I close, I'm going to ask Chief Jones to come up. Chief, come on up. Step up, step up, and say a few words because your staff does excellent work, and I want you to say something for your staff.
Thank you. So I do appreciate all the work that they do throughout the year. Through the last two years of pandemic, we've had really tested the team, and through it, they came out much stronger, much better, and we're prepared as a community. We are definitely prepared as a community for whatever may come, and it comes through a lot of hard work. And again, it's not just our team, but every member of the county, every county employee. It's a wide reach, and we appreciate all the support. Thank you.
And thank you, Chief Tripp. And again, staff, thank you for all that you do. You do service that other people don't want to go out in the community to do, to serve our community. Hats off to you, and thanks again. Madam Chair, I turn it back to you now.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers, and I want to say a special thanks to Mr. Miller and his team, Mr. Smith, and all of the community volunteers that not only serve as CERT members, but recruit other people in the community to serve as CERT members because that's critically important to that program. And then, Mr. Dudley, for everything you do, especially over the last couple of years. Getting us ready for hurricane season is critically important, that families are ready. But the work that you did over the last two years trying to plan for an emergency hurricane during a pandemic, that logistic was quite impressive, and I just want to say thank you to all of your team members that have done an outstanding job of keeping our residents not only having the ability to find safety, but also keeping them safe. So thank you so very, very much. Thank you, Commissioner Myers. I truly appreciate it. The next award is going to be offered by Commissioner White. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have the pleasure of presenting the 2021 Leading Fleets Award and the 2021 Public Sector Fleet Manager of the Year Award. It gives me great pleasure to present these recognitions, which are connected for very exciting reasons. I believe I have the following people with us this morning: Robert Stein, Director of Fleet Management; and Fleet Managers Megan Stanek, Anise Thomas, Joel Senical, and Quinn Seggy, and perhaps some other representatives from their teams. Are you all here with me this morning?
Yes, Commissioner White. Thank you very much. This is Bob Stein. We are here along with members of the fleet team. You're looking great. Hopefully, our audio and visual looks good for you, and we are watching you live on a large monitor in front of us. Please continue.
Very good. Well, you are all looking great as well. I'm glad to see you surrounded by your outstanding team. As everyone can see, Mr. Stein, his managers and other staff are joining us from the shop. There's an important reason for this. Most fleet operations cannot be carried out from the comfort of home. Also, we are able to see the wide diversity of fleet vehicles and equipment. So once again, good morning, everybody, and it's sure nice to see all of you again. Each year, Government Fleet Magazine and the American Public Works Association name the 50 leading fleets in the United States, with the top 20 being ranked. Over 20,000 public fleets are eligible to compete. These operations are performing at the highest level in fleet innovation and leadership. Additionally, the number-one overall fleet is selected for its leadership, efficiencies, ability to overcome challenges, and for having a clear vision and direction for the operation. The 2021 number-one overall fleet is a winner in every sense. Hillsborough County Fleet Management is a finely tuned machine at the top of its profession. The department oversees more than 3,300 vehicles and equipment items valued at $195 million for more than 30 county departments, along with other agencies and constitutional offices. Its annual business plan is intricately connected to our budget. It has an active shop safety program that includes annual inspections by certified technicians and a comprehensive staff training program that encourages the highest certifications. Fleet taps the latest technology to enhance across-the-board functions and its state-of-the-art programs for preventative maintenance, repairs, fleet-wide replacement, and alternative fuels, save the county hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. Further, Fleet is always prepared for natural disasters. This includes having in place an emergency management plan that provides for loss of refueling capabilities and alternate shop facilities. To enhance its already high levels of operations, Fleet not only encourages feedback, but actively seeks it from its employees, directors, other high-ranking officials, and other customers. During the pandemic, Fleet set an example nationwide for its ability to overcome challenges, including installing 135 air purification systems on fire vehicles and equipment, and erecting Plexiglas shields on transit buses. All this was done while also excelling in its daily duties and participating in community outreach, including drives for United Way, food, clothing, and toys, and providing technical training for adults with disabilities. Fleet's core values of teamwork, pride, and mutual respect helped the department earn national accreditation from the American Public Works Association, a distinction less than 5% of public fleets can claim. Mr. Stein and all members of Fleet Management, this is amazing. It's an incredible honor, not just for your department, but for our entire organization. So I'd like to offer my congratulations and invite you to say a few words.
Thank you, Commissioner White, for the kind words, and for all the commissioners for supporting this very important program. We'd first like to thank our chain of command, which was Mr. Foss, Mr. Horvudel, and Ms. Wise, for their support of the fleet family. And finally, of course, we want to thank the fleet team represented behind me for all the work that they do, their dedication, skills, and taking care of our customers. Collectively, this award was won by the members of this team in partnership with our vendors for providing best value fleet services. We are at our main location, however, we have three other satellite repair and fuel sites that are located in the south, east, and west portions of the county to take care of those geographically separated customers, and we also have a location adjacent to P-SOC to take care of the fire rescue team. They are watching us live, and we also thank them for their service and their dedication. As highlighted by Commissioner White, we do support a very large and diverse fleet of vehicles and equipment in support of a wide range of customers. Leading our maintenance team is Quinn Seggy. Quinn and his technicians support over 80,000 repair jobs annually. Over 400 makes and models of vehicles and equipment are in this diverse fleet. Leading our operations team is Joel Senical. Joel and his team oversee a $50 million annual budget and over 40 contracts with vendors that help us do our day-in, day-out responsibilities. Our two leading contracts are with parts management, NAPA. They are in all of our facilities, and collectively, we issue over 50,000 parts annually to keep the fleet up and running, and that's becoming harder and harder to do with supply chain issues. Leading our asset management team is Megan Stanek. Megan and her team oversees vehicle and equipment lifecycle management, which includes the acquisition and disposal of 400 assets annually, a value of $20 million annually. Her team is also leading our transition into more sustainable vehicles and equipment. And finally, Ms. Anise Thomas, she leads our administrative functions and does all of our HR actions. Of note, Ms. Thomas and most of our staff hold 1D positions, and most of the fleet team have earned professional degrees and technical certifications. It is a very highly credentialed organization. As highlighted by Commissioner White, 2021 was a very challenging year, as we continue to work through COVID issues that started over two years ago. The supply chain continues to get worse, and we also have, like the entire industry has, workforce challenges. These challenges, like I said, started two years ago, continuing today, and are forecasted to continue through 2023. Again, I'd like to thank the fleet family for their dedication and taking care of our customers. Without their efforts and taking care of our customers, our customers would not be able to take care of the citizens of this great county. Commissioner White, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Stein, and I'm going to ask that you remain with us as you have some unfinished business that I'm certain you will enjoy. Each year, Government Fleet invites public sector fleet management professionals to nominate their peers for its Public Fleet Manager of the Year Award. The award recognizes fleet managers who have excelled in 10 key criteria, including business plan, technology, productivity, policies, preventative maintenance, replacement program, customer service, fuel management, and safety. Based upon the award we just presented, the 2021 winner should be no surprise, and it is Robert Stein. Yeah, let's give a round of applause, absolutely. A retired United States Air Force Colonel, and I'm going to pause and go off script for a moment, Colonel Stein, and thank you for your service to our country. Mr. Stein is a talented leader who is committed to improving operations and reducing service costs by seeking staff inputs and using lean Six Sigma approaches to improve fleet processes. Through his efforts, he gained support for numerous projects that improve workforce quality of life and efficiency gains for Fleet's customers. These efforts include three new satellite repair and fueling sites that were designed based on workforce inputs. To counter COVID-19, Director Stein took numerous proactive steps that included adjusting work schedules, disinfecting county vehicles, and investing in personal protection equipment and supplies. Even before his most recent honor, Mr. Stein was nationally recognized leader in his field. He organized and hosted a biennial two-and-a-half-day fleet summit with industry experts that attracted attendees from 27 agencies, and he earned two Public Fleet Excellence Awards. Mr. Stein, these are tremendous accomplishments. Congratulations. I also want to tell you that the collection of awards we see with you and your team today is mighty impressive. You might want to consider adding another room. All of you folks must be immensely proud, and I'm sure proud of you, and, Mr. Stein, I'd like you to once again offer a few words.
Thank you again, Commissioner White, for the kind words. This individual award was definitely not won by me. It was won by the team, as you highlighted. I'm just proud to be the director of this great team that we have here. As a servant leader, we believe in encouraging our team to improve themselves professionally and personally, with the common theme of taking care of our customers and taking care of their families. As public servants, we all have missions that matter. We all have a sense of pride in what we do. I would put this team up against any of the teams that I've led during my 30-year military career, of which a third of my time was spent overseas. I'm also honored to be serving with other veterans that are here with me today and throughout the department and throughout the county. As an internal service-funded department, the fleet team strives to improve our processes, as you highlighted, through brainstorming efforts. We focus- We focus on ways to enhance our mission and quality of life. The good ideas definitely do not come from me, they come from the team through brainstorming, prioritizing what they need to do to improve the operation. We believe, as you highlighted, in mutual respect, teamwork, and pride in performing our work. Finally, we are proud to wear the Academy emblem, and we fully support Mrs. Wise's vision of one team, one county, and one community. Again, thank you very much. Turning it back over to you, Commissioner White.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. We sincerely appreciate everything that you and your team do to keep our resources running efficiently. Once again, thank you for your service to our nation and to all the veterans on your staff. Thank you all for your service to our nation. Madam Chair.
Thank you, and yes, thank you, Mr. Stein, and your entire team. Uh, we are, uh, really privileged and, and excited about the idea of public service as an excellent opportunity for those in our community that are looking for, uh, employment and a passion to give back. So here's a great example of excellent public service and a way of giving back and working in our communities. So if you're looking for opportunities, we've got them, and you obviously would have a great team to work with, with, um, Mr. Stein's team. With that, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Cohen. Uh, he has our next recognition. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and, and let me just start out by congratulating all of today's award winners. There are some really significant awards that have been given out, and I know that, uh, our citizens really appreciate everyone's hard work. This next one is right up there, and I'm really looking forward to presenting this. So I would like to ask Program Supervisor Darlene Nelson and Parks and Recreation Director Rick Valdez to join me at the podium. Our next recipient has impacted many lives while working for Hillsborough County over 24 years. A recreation supervisor based out of the Apollo Beach Parks and Recreation Center, Ms. Nelson has been a phenomenal coach for at-risk teenagers, most notably at the Florida Department of Juvenile Justice. A strong believer in the old saying, "Better athletes, better people," she teaches her students the importance of succeeding on the playing surface and especially in life. Her ability to connect with her students through athletic activities and then add the importance of respect and integrity is nothing short of inspirational. With an inner drive and a dedication to serve, she works with children of all ages and ability levels, while at the same time channeling her positivity and encouragement for them to give their best, learn from their mistakes, and respect their teammates. Her talents and skills are well-known and revered, most notably by the Positive Coaching Alliance, a national nonprofit organization whose mission is to create a positive, character-building youth sports environment. Every year, the PCA selects 100 people from across the entire nation as winners of the Positive Coaching Alliance's Regional Double Goal Coach Awards. These accolades are given to youth and high school sports coaches who combine the importance of winning with the essential philosophy of teaching life lessons through sports. Courtesy of her hard work, dedication, and compassion, Ms. Nelson received the Positive Coaching Alliance Regional Double Goal Coach Award and is now eligible to become one of the 25 national winners for whom a national PCA Coach of the Year is selected. Ms. Nelson, congratulations for a job well done. Would you like to say a few words?
First, I would like to thank, um, as I always have before, Positive Coaching Alliance for training us in this positive program that has done so much for our department. I would also like to thank, uh, my department's administrators, um, to, for allowing us to have this program in Parks and Recreation. And then, I would like to thank the commissioners for giving us this opportunity to fund this program. Thank you all for Parks and Recreation. PCA, like you said, is a character-building program. This program has no cons. This program only has pros, success stories, and wins. It allows participants to understand their feelings and how to make rational decisions. It allows them to be able to help their peers make rational decisions. This program isn't only in Parks and Recreation, or should I say, it doesn't only train for Parks and Recreation. It trains them on how to deal with life at school, parks, their communities, and at home. So commissioners, again, thank you all so much for allowing us to have this opportunity. Thank you, sir. And we're building our future. And as we say in Parks and Recreation, remember, it starts in parks. Thank you so much.
Oh, Rick, do you wanna say a few words before we, uh, do the, do the formal honors?
Sure, I'll say a few words. I, I really wanna thank all of my team for being here today, and especially Darlene. I mean, Darlene is, is really a shining star in our department, and, uh, this award is long overdue, this recognition is long overdue. And commissioners, as Darlene said, thank you very much for, for funding us and giving us the opportunity to impact so many kids in Hillsborough County. Thank you.
Okay. We gonna take a picture?
Yep, come on, come on. Bonnie, please.
Is it okay if?
It is okay if anyone you want comes up.
Bring the whole team up. Come on up, guys. You want all your guys, all come on up. There's room.
It's a team effort, right?
It is.
How about if we have our professional tell it? How do you want everybody balance?
Right.
Be good, be good?
Some people over here on this side. Two, two.
So I would suggest that we have another department where you can really make a difference in the community, because honestly, the folks that work in Park and Rec really set the tone for community, for how our children grow up and become mentors for other children and for generations to come. So thank you both, all of you, for everything you do every single day. I've had the pleasure of visiting a few parks with my grandson to watch you guys in action, and it is truly, uh, a love of the work and a love of community and a love of our children. So thank you so very much for what you do. Uh, with that, we will move on to our next recognition, which is to be celebrated today. It's a wonderful opportunity. Commissioner Myers, are you available to offer the next proclamation?
Yes, and thank you, Madam Chair. Josh Bellotti, Director of Engineering and Operations, would you please come forward? Welcome, Josh. The Hillsborough County Public Works Department has done a fantastic job in providing safe and efficient transportation in the county by maintaining roads, bridges, traffic signals, and street signs. The team also perfectly maintains functional stormwater systems that protect the public and provides mosquito management. This talented and dedicated department works like a well-oil machine, assuring that all county's needs are met. This proclamation salutes the dedication and hard work of everyone in public works. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Hillsborough County Public Works Services are an integral part of residents' everyday lives, providing street, water, sewage, mosquito control, traffic engineering, and maintenance public buildings, and solid waste collection and disposal. And whereas the infrastructure built and maintained by public works include over 7,300 traffic lane miles, 565 traffic signals, 41,500 drainage structures, 1,300 miles of stormwater pipes, 15,000 mosquito production sites, and 277 bridges, among others. And whereas water resources each day supplies more than 71 million gallons of drinking water, treats 25 million gallons of wastewater, and distributes 29 million gallons of reclaimed water. And whereas conservation and environmental lands management oversees 84,000 acres of parks and preserved land, serving over 2.8 million visitors annually. And whereas the solid waste division process over 1.1 million tons of municipal, commercial, and residential waste, and convert over 435,000 tons of solid waste to energy, generating enough energy to power up to 35,000 households. And whereas real estate and facility services has been certified by the National American Public Work Association since 2014. And whereas the health, safety, security, and prosperity of county residents depends on county public works. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, thus hereby declare May 15 through May 21, 2022, as Public Works Week in Hillsborough County, and recognizes contributions made every day by the qualified and dedicated public work employees who contribute to the community's quality of life through their efforts and skills executed this fifth day of May 2022, signed by all seven commissioners. Congratulations, Mr. Josh Bellotti. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Myers. Uh, we really appreciate your, uh, support and active engagement with public works, and we thank all the commissioners for your support and for this proclamation. Hillsborough County's Public Works Administration has over 500 employees, uh, but it's not just us. There are hundreds more in the Water Resources Department, the Conservation Environmental Lands Management Department, Solid Waste Department, the Facilities Management and Real Estate Department, and the Fleet Department. Even though they were named specifically, I wanted to recognize them too, because they're also accredited by the American Public Works Association, um, as are solid waste facilities and, of course, public works. I think Hillsborough County may be the only one to have four of its departments accredited by the APWA, uh, which is an accomplishment. And the hundreds of employees across all of those departments, uh, they really are our backbone. Those are the folks that are out there working hard, doing great work, uh, every day to keep this county running. Through the course of the past couple of years with the pandemic, um, their work ensured that all of our essential services, uh, were maintained uninterrupted. And they do that work behind the scenes primarily. So I think it's great when we get an opportunity, uh, like this to recognize them for their contributions to our community. I know I'm truly grateful for all that they do. And so, on behalf of them and on behalf of all the other departments, I just wanna thank the Board of County Commissioners for this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Again, Josh, thank you for all that you do, because all of us as commissioners is one department. Our residents always call, whether they want us to repair the sidewalk, sewage, our pothole, your department answers the call, and thanks again. Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers, and thank you to all of you that have really put your heart and soul into the work that we do for residents for Hillsborough County. You know, today's recognition ceremony is not only to celebrate the great folks that live here, work here, and serve our residents, but also to honor those that put their heart into the work that we do here. So with that, I will close our ceremony today and celebrate Cinco de Mayo, uh, to be able to say, go out and celebrate the awesomeness of Hillsborough County. Thank you so much.